Uh, council meeting. We're going to kick it off tonight with, uh, council member Stephanie Obanion, uh, leading us in the pledge of allegiance to the US flag. Paul Roman will follow her with the Texas pledge. And then Luke Potts will give our invocation. So please rise.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one.
And indivisible.
Please, David. Uh, dear God, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to serve you and to serve this community. We just ask that tonight you give us uh, patience, wisdom, and unity as we discuss all the issues that will be affecting our community. And, uh, please just look after all the people that have had tough times this past weekend. Uh, cut the floods and we ask that, uh, you do everything you can to assist all those families. In your name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen. All right. We will kick this meeting off us, um, Tuesday, J- July 8th at 5:30 PM. Uh, I do want to note that council member Craig Pearson will be participating remotely. We have video conference from Panama City Beach, Florida. Uh, just for the record, make sure that, uh, council member Pearson can hear us and that we can hear him. Can you hear us?
I can hear you loud and clear.
All right, we can hear you as well. That's good. All right. Now we're all legal. Uh, first item after that is, uh, public comments. If anyone wishes to address the council for any reason, uh, they may do so at this time. Um, you take your life in your own hands when you do that, but, uh, sometimes people want to. Looking like nobody wants to. Uh, we'll close public comments and we will, um, go to the consent agenda items three through six. These items can be enacted by a single motion. Uh, if the council wants to pull off any one of these and discuss separately, they may do so. I will read them into the record and then we can, uh, either remove items or approve them in a single motion. Uh, item three is, uh, approving the minutes of the June 24th council meeting. Item four is appointing and or and or reappointing the following boards and commissions. Our planning and zoning, uh, we are reappointing Quentin Lachlan and Dominica Garza and Justin Ruiz. On the parks board, we are reappointing Ted Smith, Diane Ring and Jason Wolf. And the ethics commission, we are pointing Jo- John Glanzman, um, as Luke's replacement because, um, his, uh, his person moved to planning and zoning, uh, Damon, I believe that was. Item five is approving a resolution suspending the July 31st, uh, 2025 effective date of Encore Electric Delivery Company's requested rate change. Surprise, surprise, they were wanting an increase. And item six is authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with ICE of ICE America for the rental of a synthetic ice rink as part of the Christmas on the Chisholm Trail event. Those are items three through six. If you wish to remove one or wish to, um, make a motion, the chair would, oh, be open to those.
I'm approve items three through second.
A motion and a second to approve items three through six. Any other discussion? All right, all in favors, all, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Passage unanimously with a thumbs up from our Aggie friend in Florida. All right, item seven is receive a presentation on the fiscal year 2026 proposed annual budget for the city of Belton. Mr. Roger.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here we are again. Um, this is a big day, so I'm bringing to you tonight the official proposed budget, the city of Belton, uh, for fiscal year 2026. Uh, bear in mind though, this is still a work in progress. Um, we still have a lot of moving numbers and the budget that we adopt may look different than the one that I'm bringing you tonight. So what does the proposed budget for 2026 look like? Well, it's our intent for this budget to be a very lean budget. Um, on the utility side, I mean, I'm on the revenue side, which you're looking at here. Um, there's no changes to the utility rates in the proposed budget for 2026. Uh, city council, we've, you may recall from previous meetings that we were looking at maybe increasing sewer rates. Um, your direction was to not do that. So the proposed budget, we, we took that revenue out. Um, TURs value, property values are still increasing considerably. Preliminary values, um, show the TURs increasing around 12% um, in property values. There's a 4% sales tax growth, uh, for 2026 in our proposed budget. And they, and the revenues that we're showing in the proposed budget reflects a tax rate of 53 cents as opposed to our current rate of 5225. Um, please keep in mind that those numbers are preliminary. Um, I don't have a certified tax role yet. Um, those are coming soon and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but the, uh, to get to the revenue that's reflected, property tax revenue that's reflected in our 2026 budget based upon the preliminary values they have now, it looks like, um, a three quarter cent tax rate increase. On the expenditure side for 2026, we have 1.1 million dollars in street maintenance, um, a 5% increase over last year. There's a 15% increase to health insurance premiums. Um, you may recall that our, our loss ratio, uh, will likely push our premiums higher to, to reach that cap that we have of 15%. There's no new positions in our 2026 budget. And we plan to invest heavily in IT equipment, um, spending about $250,000 for a data center upgrade servers, which is storage, et cetera. So what does that look like? In numbers, our revenues increase, um, better probably do this one. Our revenues for 2026, 52.8 million, uh, compared to our originally adopted budget of 50.9 in 2025. That's a 3.7% increase in, in, in resources and resources includes use of reserves. That's why I use that term, not just revenues. The expenditures however, go down actually in total by million dollars, 2.2% from 48.6 million to 47.6 million in 2026. So what I want you to do is some quick math here, just so you know, if you do that and you do that, that 5.2 million dollar increase that you see there um, in basically net income in 2026, that comes from just two funds. So the TURS fund, um, BDC's, um, operating fund are four and a half million of that 5 million dollar increase that you see there. That's why it's so large. So first, um, you've heard most of this before, um, through the presentations we've done. Uh, just wanted to kind of wrap this up real quickly. So general fund, uh, property tax revenue here goes up around $800,000 compared to 2025. Um, based upon again, the, the tax rate and preliminary numbers that I know now. So, um, 4% increase to sales tax revenue, uh, increases $200,000 for sales taxes. One thing that does happen here, you'll see that all in all, general fund revenues increase about $500,000 to 25.4 million. But what you have here is now we're not planning on using any reserves in 2026 with the revenue figures that you see here, which means we have a structurally balanced budget for 2026, again, using the revenues that I'm reflecting here.
Mike, how do you feel about the million dollar increase in that property tax revenue from, but from our estimate, 2025 estimate? It's a pretty big swing, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Um, again, I can't tell you that that's the number it's going to be once we get final values in, um, at the net, at the, in the, uh, end of the July. Um, that's the revenue again, that, that it takes to make revenues equal expenditures, expenditures.
And, and this number is coming from us or coming from Bell County?
I use their preliminary numbers.
Yeah.
Throw it into my spreadsheet, some unknowns there, obviously. Um, um, so that number is my number.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll know more.
Off, is it higher or lower than the, their number?
No, they don't give me value. They don't give me that 9.9 million dollars at this point. Um, well, all they give us is their estimate of what the property values might be. Um, so then I can take that estimate, put it in a, in the tax rate calculation worksheet type format, um, with TURs, estimated TURs values, um, things like that.
And, and all the other things that happen.
Correct. Um, and there's still a very large amount of uncertified properties right now. Um, still, I think almost a thousand properties have not been, are, are still under ARB review. Uh, so that's, that's an unknown as well. We'll see where that goes, where that number falls once we get certification time. Um, but that 9.8, so the way I worked, it's really, this is expenditure driven. Um, so you see, we have 25.4 million dollars in expenditures. And so I say, what's the revenue? This is really the property tax is one of the few that I can control. So what revenue can, does it take me to make 25.4 million dollars of revenue? Equal 25.4 million dollars of expenditures. I mean, that's the number. I don't know what tax rate that's going to be to bring in that number, but that's the number that it would take to balance this budget. It will know more soon.
Is transfers, I know that's pulling the 1.2.
That one or this? Yeah.
Uh, for a lot of capital projects at a later date, am I correct?
Um, that transfer you see there is for a lot of things, including what you're saying. It's not just capital projects. This is transfers um, of, um, services that say one fund, this is not the one, but say, um, the utility fund transfers money to the general fund for services that personnel cost allocations between funds. Um, some of my time gets charged to the utility fund, et cetera, and that's, that sort of stuff. So there's personnel allocations. Um, there's equipment replacement transfers, equipment replacement fund, I mean, funding, that kind of stuff. Um, and then there's certainly some capital project funding that goes along with that.
Is information technology in that transfer?
Information technology, that's a great question. Shows up here under services. Um, because in my accounting world, um, it's not a transfer because it's, it's based upon services that are provided um, for each, uh, for other divisions.
So building, building maintenance would also be a service that would be provided. And so it's, there's a sinking fund for those or whatever you call, call it, that we would accrue, accrue some revenues over time. So we don't have big expenses.
That's correct. So, so, um, the IT group with three employees and then all of the, all of the software costs and then building up some fund balance for example, this very large purchase we're doing this year. That happens, but they, but it's essentially a charge for services is why it shows up under services. If you left that out, then essentially you would not, the general fund would not reflect its true cost of operations, which is why you have to charge it back that way. A transfer in the accounting world, when you're setting aside money for, into another fund with no expectation of anything in return. So when I'm setting aside money for future capital projects, for future equipment replacement.
It's unencumbered.
It's, that's right. There's, there's nothing that really goes along with this. Whereas in, in this, in the internal service fund transfers or for that services, um, that's a true cost of, of Chris's fund providing work for digital general fund. That's why it shows up there. And that is one of the things that changes in the expenditure side. Good lead in there soon. Um, that increase is due to the primarily that IT um, work plus our garbage collection costs are increasing. Um, there's, there is about a $400,000 increase to personnel. Um, again, no new people here. That's that 15% increase that I was talking about, um, for healthcare premiums as well as, um, just normal pay increases for employees is what drives up that personnel cost. Um, transfers, what offsets those increases a bit though, is a decrease to the transfers that we just talked about. Uh, some, some of that equipment replacement funding, um, is one of those and that goes down um, a bit because we used, we were accelerating funding into that fund and we're no longer having to do that. So expenditures on the general fund increase about $500,000 for 2026. Again, like we mentioned before, that 25.4 is basically that same 25.4 on the revenue side. On the debt service fund side, so expenditures in the debt service fund increase about $300,000. You'll recall we issued debt in 2025. And this is for the fire, I mean, the ladder truck that we purchased for the fire department as well as um, the acquisition of the former Miller Heights Elementary School. Well, that is followed by then this one, this $300,000 increase in resources or revenues to the debt service fund. The one I want to bring you, uh, your attention to is that 211,000 that you see there, that is essentially the, the general fund paying for the debt service on that ladder truck. You recall, that's how I wanted to, to do this going forward. Um, essentially that money was going into an equipment replacement fund and instead now it's going into the debt service fund. So the debt service rate would not increase as much as it would otherwise. Um, hotel occupancy fund, uh, one of our special revenue funds that we budget. Um, this increases, um, about 14% in 2026. That's the three year average growth rate for this fund and that's as good as any guess for me to get us to 2026. On the expenditure side, you see a hundred thousand dollar cost increase in 2026 for the hotel occupancy tax fund. That is to add or in, um, enhance some events that we're having. And we also plan on expanding, um, our marketing presence considerably. And that's the reason that increases. The TURS fund, another, um, special revenue fund that we have budgeted a $600,000 increase here. That, um, is property taxes, but that's not all city property tax. Uh, the city contributes to that fund as well as the county. So some of that $600,000 increase comes from the county. I think it's around 200 or, uh, some of that, uh, $200,000 increase from the county. On the expenditure side, expenditures go down actually per considerably because this $3 million, we have fewer capital projects in 2026. And so that one and a half million, um, is transferred for capital projects in 2026, whereas it was 3 million in 2025.
And my point question on the TURS fund and just looking through the budget and thinking about this and our commitment to street maintenance. Um, a, a, a lot of streets, uh, are in the TURS zone that, uh, the city is funding the maintenance on that.
Correct.
Um, did that be something that maybe TURS thinks about is making contribution to the maintenance of, uh, city streets?
The TURS can, can instruct, instruct street. The TURS cannot maintain street.
Okay. It's for the infrastructure.
Yeah. That's a good question. Um, moving on to water and sewer for 2026. So you'll see water and sewer, um, revenues are generally flat, $200,000 increase. But I told you before, we don't plan on raising utility rates, water or sewer rates in 2026. That increase would be generally driven by, um, additional customers. Higher consumption from additional customers, if you will, kind of a natural increase in revenue, even though there's no rate increase. On the expenditure side, expenditures actually go down from this 14.5 million to 14.2. Um, let's see, so the big difference there or that primary savings comes from that transfers line. Again, it's a little bit lower, um, in 26 than it was in 2025.
Are we rat-holing some money for a future bond issue or something with that extra 2.3 million?
So you see this savings, we talked about that savings right here where my, my, uh, we planned on spending 14 and a half million, but we may end up at 13.2. Let me, let me do that. So all of that savings comes, whoops, sorry, wrong button. There we are. Um, all of that savings comes from that debt service line there where we, you may recall that I mentioned, um, we had planned on issuing the 2025 certificates essentially in 2024. Um, but the delay of the design of the wastewater treatment plant pushed that debt issuance um, later. So we just did that. So there are savings there. So here's my plan. Um, I, you'd, you may recall that in the previous discussion, I said that my estimate for revenues looks to be spot on. In fact, if I'm within a hundred dollars, I win both showcases, right?
It can go over.
But it can't go over.
Yeah.
That's right. You know what I'm doing. Um, but this is, this is, we're still have several through, we're in, we're just finished June. So I've still got four months of generally high usage still remaining in this fiscal year. So I don't know if I'm going to make those numbers or not, that 14 and a half. If we do, yes, we'll have some surplus at the end of fiscal 25 that then we need to, we can consider doing some things with. Um, if it doesn't, then if those revenues come in substantially less, the savings from that debt service that you see there will be, can be used to offset the revenue that I thought I was going to get, but I didn't. So we can use some of those savings. Long story short is, let's wait until September or so and find out where we're going to land on utility revenues. And then if there is some, some savings, um, in 2025, we have some choices to make. Um, we can, we can transfer that into the capital, uh, capital projects fund for some future projects. We can, um, also maybe pay down some debt. So I talked to our financial advisor. Um, those 2015 certificates that we have outstanding, um, are beyond the call date. So we could use some of that savings to pay down some of that future debt. Um, the ROI on that is not that great because the interest rate on those bonds wasn't that much. But that's a possibility. Um, the other you'll recall in our CIP discussion that it looks like we might have another bond issuance in 20, in 2028. So it could be back to kind of what you're saying is we could, like we did with the wastewater treatment plant. If there are some savings, we could push that into, into a capital project fund to reduce that future debt issuance that might occur in 2028. So that's a future discussion I'd like to have with you in say, September, as we get closer to the end of the year. Part of our budget amendment at the end of the year may be doing some other things with that. Um, and also some reserves, um, bringing that down closer to that 30% number at the end of the year. So hold tight on that because that's, that's, that's my plan for now on, on 2025, what to do in 2025. Does that answer your question then? Okay. Um, drainage fund is our other enterprise fund. This fund's going up in revenue, 5% is what I have in 2026. That's generally the growth rate of this, uh, regularly. So I'm increasing that again. Expenditures fall a little bit, but you know, remain kind of in the ballpark there. Um, from one year to the next. IT, our IT fund is one that will increase um, in expenses from 1.2 to 1.3. Remember I talked about this big increase that we're, that we have here in, uh, in software maintenance. That's software cost that's going up as well as, um, that capital. Because that increases one and a half, that's what's driving the increase here in revenues by 300,000. Um, and those revenues that we're talking about here are the ones that come from other funds within the city. Building maintenance fund is our other internal service fund. This fund's relatively flat, but what I just wanted to point out to you is again, for 2026, we plan on drawing down reserves out of this fund a bit by 67,000. Um, expenditures are fairly flat. The last budgeted fund that we have is our economic development corporation fund. Again, like the general fund, sales tax revenues go up 4% here. Um, but it stays relatively flat because this miscellaneous income goes down about the same amount. The difference here is on the expense side where this, this 9.5 that you're seeing here is, has been amended already. We did a budget amendment, number one, to amend this by 7.8 million because of the land purchases that the EDC did during the year. But that falls considerably from 1.1 to 300,000 and, you know, 7 million to 300,000 in 2026. So that's, that's a two and a half million dollar net income, if you would, in EDC for 2026. But as I said before, this still is a work in progress.
If you don't mind, just go back to the last two funds, go one before it.
That one?
Well, one before. So when we look at this fund, it shows total resources, right? Revenue and expenses?
Yes, sir.
And when we look at EDC.
Yes, that's, I, I changed the terms on you to resources when we're using reserves. So reserves are not revenues because they happened in the past. Reserves become resources. So because, because that has in there, that, what that one's in there.
Because, so if I were to look at that count, account at the end of 2026, building maintenance fund, you're projecting it's going to have $480,000 in that account or in that fund.
No.
More or less?
What happens, it's less. So what happens, here's the real number for revenues. If you add those two numbers up there.
Yeah.
That's revenue.
Yep.
So, but to, for the sake of, of budgeting, yeah, this is real cost.
So it's a net.
A net loss of $67,000.
Okay, 67. So how much is in the fund?
What's returned?
At the end of the year.
Yeah.
Cause here's the thing that we need to see as our fiduciary is we got, we got this water, these three or four revenue buckets that go into this big pool. And then they go into all these like personnel and EDC and TURs, right? And then we've got these reserve funds that start to build up capacitance.
Correct.
And so they start to reserve, we start to accumulate. Well, we've got a total accumulation of a lot of reserves that the aggregate total is probably greater than we would ever need. And so there's a, there's a balance between trying to make sure that we keep a good, a well-resourced city fund and the lowest tax rates to our constituents. And when we can't see the numbers.
Right.
We, you're taking our ability to be able to make a decision away.
Correct. I understand. So, so I didn't show reserves on the slides for two reasons. One, to keep it a little shorter. Um, but two, still the numbers are moving. So as we go forward towards adoption.
Yep.
Um, and especially with that tax rate discussion.
Yeah.
Um, we'll bring into that, into that discussion, the fund balances and stuff like that.
Just, you know, so as use of accumulated reserves is a fancy word that most of us aren't going to see and probably aren't going to question.
Yeah.
Oh, we're accumulating reserves, we're using them. That's good.
Yeah.
What is that?
Right. Got it.
It's a use of accumulated reserves. Well, then you turn to the next page and that's why I wanted to look at, so if we go to BEDC, we're not using.
Right.
There's, so what's the balance? I mean, it looks like we had 9.6 million. Was that a total expense of what, what was the bud, what, what's in the fund?
So, so first building maintenance?
So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm just now in this, this fund.
This fund.
EDC fund.
This fund.
The fund, the beginning balance at the beginning of the year, the ending balance at the end of the year. I'm just looking for that.
For 2026, for 2025, we'll probably end at 5.4 million dollars in reserves.
Yeah.
When we increase here in 2026, if, if we get 3.7 million revenue and 1.2 in expenses, then there will be seven.
Preserves this fund of roughly two and a half million dollars.
I'm sorry, say that again. Yeah, that's correct. That's a hundred percent correct.
It just, it's not, when, when I, because we're seeing so many different colors of money
Mm-hmm.
and we're not talking about them generally in the same way. And so I'm just.
Right.
It just, it adds to a level of.
Understand.
Well, you've got different types of accounts too, where BDC enters, it's appropriate for those reserves to build up because you have huge.
That's right. Very big projects that, yeah.
Maybe years out.
Correct. Yeah, I, again, I.
We fund, we're kind of monitoring year to year.
In our previous discussions, you'll recall that I gave you fund balance information.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is just, I'm showing you this one to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make it a few slides, fewer slides. And that's without getting, but, but you're, that's correct. So 7.9 million is where this may end at the end of 2026.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's accumulated reserves. And it's, that one is 200,000 is what sits in building main. Anything for move on?
No, I just, kind of adding on to what David, Dave was saying is like, when we look at our water sewer fund, it's going up to over $7 million in fund balance.
Correct.
We're having, you know, we did a new rate study, but a lot of that's encumbered. I say encumbered, the plan is to use that for future debt or to mitigate future debt.
Correct.
And so anyway, it's just, it's, um, it's, it's kind of hard to drive without seeing how much gas you have and how fast you're going.
Understood.
So it's the, it helps us, um, you know, have those kind of, because we need to know velocity, which is what you're providing. We're, we're increasing our budget, we're decreasing our budget, but we don't know how much is in the tank.
Right.
Like, you know, and so, um, yeah, it just, it helps us. Like, you know, and so, yeah, it just, it helps us.
Again, that's, that's, when, when we were spending more time with it in previous discussions is when I showed that.
Yep.
And I was trying to put fit all this on one slide.
Yeah, I understood.
So, again, as I said, there's, there's, there's still things moving in this. Um, the most significant moving, moving part right now is how much property tax revenue and the property tax rate and all of that. Again, what you've seen so far is my calculation, which is wrong, of what tax revenue might be at a certain tax rate. And again, why I, why I showed you I do that is, how much revenue does it take to, to cover expenditures in twenty twenty-six? So I work from the expenditure side. Anyway, we will get a certified role from the appraisal district the week of the twenty-fifth of July. The twenty-fifth of July is on a Friday, so they may get it to us earlier during the week. Or it may be the Monday after that. State law says that that, they're supposed to give that to us by the twenty-fifth. And around that is where we've gone. Once I get that, then we can really start getting into some real numbers as to, you know, what tax rate we might look at and all of that sort of stuff. That's coming in the future. Water and sewer revenue, I've beaten that to death. I told you about the, I'm not so sure where we're gonna land on that yet. That's still a moving factor. You're going to hear tonight about our compensation study implementation and the cost to implement that study. What I can tell you is none of the cost of implementing that study is in this proposed budget right now. And it would be probably wise to implement the comp study. So that'll be a number that changes throughout our budget document. If, if we go, you know, when we go forward, if you say, yeah, gave early, let's do this. And then lastly, if property tax revenues come in higher than what I'm showing you here, we might want to look at some of the supplemental expenditures that I referenced very early in our discussions. There was five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of those things, if I recall, that we might want to consider adding back if revenues come in better. Again, this, that, this is all preliminary at this point. So what does our calendar look like? July twenty-five is where I was telling you, we'll get our certified role. It's, the meeting of August twelfth is what we have scheduled currently to propose the tax rate. So the twenty-fifth, I'll have the numbers. On the twelfth, I'll bring to you the no new revenue rate. These will be the official calculations at that time by, by the appraisal district, who does that for us. But we'll know then the, the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. But then you'll ha, have to propose a tax rate for this next fiscal year or twenty twenty-five tax year. That's a council duty, not an appraisal district duty. So we'll talk about that in depth on the twelfth of August, and we'll schedule public hearings. Twenty-sixth of August, we'll have public hearings and we'll adopt a tax rate budget, all of this stuff on September ninth. Unless we have to go over the voter approval rate, in which case we'd have to adopt by August the eighteenth. If that, so if we have to start scheduling to meet that deadline, we would have to schedule a lot of special meetings in this short timeframe. Hopefully, we don't get to that. If, with any luck, if you pointed your camera at that QR code or you clicked that link right there, if you would go to our published annual, proposed annual budget, it's a pretty thing. I'm not gonna do that for the sake of time.
Of course.
Any questions or comments? This, again, this, this particular item is really more of a presentation of what is of our official proposed annual budget. This now formally documents the date that we're doing, that we, I am presenting it, or Sam is presenting it to city council, and this now starts the clock towards adoption. Now we have, start having deadlines to meet and things like that. So that's what this is. But I appreciate all the comments that we had about that.
Mike, you have an estimate for increased healthcare expense for guests?
Ooh, that's a good one. I, I want to say the increase was around two hundred thousand or so for healthcare premiums. It was that we're gonna be fifteen percent. I don't remember what exactly that number, but it seemed like it was in the two hundred thousand dollar range, two hundred to two fifty.
And, and looking at the budget, the reason I ask, it looks like healthcare is spent by the department is just all over the board. Some are up twenty percent and some are none. Do you evaluate that by employee?
It's per employee and per that employee, the selection of that employee, what they, you know, if employee only coverage, the city pays for, a hundred percent. If they do family coverage, we pay much less percent. I mean, it's a higher dollar. But we pay a less percentage of that. And so even small, these, some of small departments, if they change coverage, if, then it can change the numbers pretty dramatically.
That's good.
I have a question. Do, is related but not related. Do you by chance know with BISD with the school board when they adopt their tax rate?
Ooh, the county adopts early.
They all adopt tax rate pretty likely around the same time.
Around that.
There's a, there's a specific calendar. Theirs is impacted by the state more than the county and the city are.
Okay. I just, I know in certain cities, I've seen where city goes first and they'll lower their tax rate. But then BISD will say, well, we'll raise ours then, and they'll still get taxed the same.
You will start hearing a lot about proposed tax rates in the surrounding community. But, but, for instance, the paper published the proposed budget for Colleen, I think, has almost a three cent tax increase in Colleen, I believe. But that's just in the proposed budget. That's not the proposed tax rate. What some communities do with a proposed tax rate is they make that the, the, the maximum tax rate that they'll consider. In other words, they would just, like voter approval, whatever that, that, we're not gonna go over that. And then that's what you go forward with, and then they will come in and adopt a rate lower than that.
Which we've done multiple times.
Yeah. Me personally, I prefer that you propose a rate that you're gonna consider for adoption, just because it's more transparent to the community. But, but there's certainly, what happens is you can't go over the rate that you propose without going through the whole hearing process all over again. That's why you do it that way. But you keep your eye on the news because you're gonna start seeing.
And a couple of years ago, when the, when the state did their first round of compression on, on school funding, they increased the homestead exemption from forty thousand to a hundred thousand, I think. There were lots of taxing entities that saw that as an opportunity to, to increase their rate because the average citizen would still see a decrease in their, in their total taxes. And we didn't do that. That wasn't the intention of of, of what the compression was. And, and I think two years ago, it was my first round going through this, two years ago, Mike, when you brought it to us, you, you showed us what the, what the average property owner in the city of Belton would pay in city taxes. And you also showed us what somebody with a homestead exemption, average house with a homestead exemption.
Yeah.
Would pay. I would appreciate if we could see that again too, whenever you, whenever we get into the, the tax rate discussion.
True.
And we were very intentional about, about making sure that the, the folks who are living in their homes and paying their taxes out of their pocket and not recording tax payments to a P and L, you know, for commercial or retail or investment property or something like that, would, would be very minimally affected. And we did that again last year, even when the county and others went way up. Last year, it was also a consideration that we knew with the, with the new utility rate study, that there was gonna be an increase in the average homeowner's budget. And so we've adopted a very conservative budget and tax rate. And a lot of those were due to use of reserves. We, we use excess reserves that we had to keep the budget and the tax rate low. And I, I think those are good decisions, but this year, we're not using quite as many reserves with this version of the proposed budget. So I think those, when, when, when it comes time for talking about tax rates and stuff, I think that'd be good to see, how does this affect the average property owner and the average property owner with a homestead exemption? Because I think that, I think that's valuable information for me as I consider my fiduciary duty here.
Certainly.
I'll add too, I think this is really an ode to the staff. You guys have done a great job every year. And no matter what we do, you guys always seem to beat it. I could take it as a challenge and I, I, I want to challenge you guys to, to be your best and be the leanest you can be and not going overboard on the citizen. And like I said, every year you're gone, no new revenue, you guys have come back. Hey, we beat, we beat the budget, you know? And so I'd like to say we keep that trend moving forward and that's kind of the challenge and fiduciary putting us together.
Understood.
Thank you.
And just a note on that, home state exemption, you know, there's still a large percentage of the population that appraised value exceeds. I gotta get this right. Appraised value is, is much, much higher than their assessed value. And so they've been paying ten percent catch-up for a few years. Our tax revenue, our ad long tax revenue is up close to ten percent this year. And you factor in TERS is probably up at sixteen percent this year. So our, our income is significantly increased. And I think we've done a great job of trying to keep the tax rate low, be very, very efficient. And just a note, looking at the, the, the debt issuance, next year will be the peak for our debt expense. And then it starts to decline about fifty thousand a year after that. With a big gap in twenty thirty to twenty thirty-one. And so as we think about water and sewer rates, and if there's a little bit of an unknown.
That's right.
That expense for new facilities will continue to decline and be less of a burden on water and sewer users. So we should be at the, maybe a peak for water and sewer rates with the ability to possibly come down in the future. A significant drop. And, and if we're thinking about issuing any debt, we may really think about trying to push that off until something rolls off, which is the thirty to thirty-one timeframe. Just look at that stuff.
And we started working on that some years ago, kind of going towards a page you go where we basically fund our own operations without the use of debt. And I think we've done a good job of, of at least transferring the debt to operating funds like water and sewer that, that, that have, generate revenue and also to TERS, be able to do large capital projects. So it's, it's, it's been a good, good combo. Any other comments or questions? Right, well, that, there's no motion needed. This is just a presentation on the budget. If you have any other specific questions, I'd suggest you get with Mike between now and when we call our next meeting. And so speaking of item eight, is to call a public hearing on the city council or the city of Belton fiscal year twenty twenty-six proposed annual budget for September twenty, September ninth, sorry, September ninth at five thirty PM. Chairwood Entertainment should do that.
Mayor, this, the, this is calling the, the public hearing, which is August twenty-sixth at five thirty. The adoption might be on September ninth.
Ah, okay. So. So, yeah, go ahead.
Um, you want me to just make a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number eight, which is calling for a public hearing to be held at the regular city council meeting on August the twenty-sixth at five thirty at the Harris Community Center.
Say it. We have a motion and second to call a public hearing on the budget. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, passes unanimously. All right, item nine, receive a report on the twenty twenty-five compensation study and consumer implementation. It's Megan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you guys for taking the time to review our compensation study. I've got Lori Messer with me with Logic Compensation Group. She's done a great job working on getting all the data from, we, we had originally nineteen organizations, brought it down to eighteen because one of them was a small organization. But she's got some good data for you guys. And if you have any questions afterwards, you can come see me and I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. And good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you an overview of the compensation study that myself and my team performed for the city. I'm gonna apologize in advance in case I mess up technologically on moving the screen around, but it looks like I'm starting out okay. So the purpose of what I'm going to share with you tonight is just a, a basic overview of the phases of the study. Who we surveyed, what we did, how we did it, what we found, what we recommend for implementation, and what we also recommend for maintaining the system being a forward. So the study is comprised of four phases. The first phase was study initiation. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more in depth on the next slide. The second phase of the study is where we actually developed a custom survey, sent it out to organizations, analyzed the data and found out where the city stood in relationship to the market from a pay and special, from a base pay and a supplemental pay perspective. Then phase three, we provided the city with our recommendations, this report and presentation as well. And then phase five is basically our client support phase where we are available to the city. Over the next twelve months, we do quarterly follow-ups with them to make sure the system and the recommendations are working as anticipated. There aren't any unintended consequences that may have arisen since the completion or implementation of the study. So want to talk first about the project initiation. We worked, my teammate, Madeline Thomas and myself to work very closely with the leadership team here at the city, HR and the city manager's office and finance. These initial meetings are basically an opportunity for us to gather information from the city and understand where does the city want to be at the end of the day. We also need to clarify, you know, what is working well? What are some of the challenges the city may be encountering with regards from a pay perspective associated with recruitment and retention? What is the city's compensation philosophy and supporting strategies? That helps us to determine how are we gonna analyze the data to determine where the city falls with regards to a level of competitiveness? As well as who is the market in which the city is competing with for talent? Based on that, we identified nineteen organizations for which to survey. Again, as Megan had mentioned, we received data from ninety-five percent of the organizations. Those that you see in orange may have had some staffing challenges, so they provided us with their data and we assisted them heavily in gathering and completing the survey on their behalf. We did identify sixty-seven jobs for which we surveyed. And I did mention those in orange we helped significantly with. Once we got the data, there were a few things that we needed to do. First, we needed to make some adjustments to the data. The first thing we did is we made some time and pay adjustments. We know that the city is hoping to implement on October first. Well, the data that we receive is at a point in time, it's kind of in arrears. So we want to adjust that data to be effective October first. So there are two things that we need to adjust, actual salaries and actual, and salary ranges. There are two different metrics that we use. Actual salaries were adjusted by an annual rate of two point three percent. It wasn't a full two point three percent because it was only a partial period of time. That we received information from World at Work, which is a compensation association that had government, Texas government data that we used. The next was the salary ranges. These, these adjustments to salary ranges were obtained from those nineteen or eighteen organizations on the previous slide. So that was the first thing that we did. The next thing that we did is we applied geographic adjustments. Geographic adjustments, the purpose of that is to normalize the data, the salary data that we get from other organizations to be reflective of the cost of labor here in Belton. Okay, because some of the organizations based on size were further spread out, so we needed to make appropriate adjustments. So the larger organizations, we had to bring those figures down because their cost of labor is higher. The final thing that we did is we looked at, there were some organizations included in the study, three of them to be exact, that had populations over a hundred thousand. And given that, we excluded those organizations from the leadership data. The reason for that is oftentimes they have larger staffs, larger budgets. So we wanted to ensure that we were comparing more closely apples to apples from a scoping perspective.
So you're talking about city manager, department heads, things like that, but we're, but we're still looking at their meter readers and.
Right. With individual contributor type jobs. Right, with individual contributor type jobs, the work is the work. Um, so correct. It was a manager level and above. Um, that were impacted by that. Um, so the survey results, let's talk about that. Um, when we looked at um, the general pay structure, this isn't like the sworn fire, sworn police, this is everybody else. Um, the key metric that we use for comparison to determine the level, the city's level of competitiveness is the city's salary range midpoint. Against what are people actually getting paid in the market? Because that's what you have to compete with in order to attract people. And so when we looked at that, the city fell at what we call a market index at ninety four point six percent in the marketplace. Not bad. Anything over ninety percent is considered competitive. Ideally, we wanted to get that number closer to a hundred percent. And by making some adjustments that I'm going to talk about um, a little later on, for example. Realigning jobs in the proposed pay structure, we were able to get that market index to one hundred percent. It's one hundred point seven percent based on our recommendations.
When we first started doing this, Sam, do you remember, we were like seventy percent, something like that, sixty seven, like really low? Yeah. Yeah, it's been a long way.
The city's done a really good job and we'll talk about that in the recommendations is what, with what they've done to maintain the system year over year. O- organizations that don't do that, we see that number slip every year. So they've done a really good job, so kudos to them. Uh, when we look at the sworn fire. With the sworn fire and the sworn police, we look at their um. Metrics a little bit differently. We focus on the range minimums and maximums. Um, because a lot of those that a firefighter, for example, could be a career level position. I don't ever want to drive a fire engine. I don't ever want to be a supervisor. I'm a career firefighter. So it's not unusual for a firefighter or a police officer to stay at that same position throughout their entire career. Which is why we look at range minimums and maximums. Um, they were in pretty good shape. Um, but we threw some adjustments that we made, we were able to get them. Um, at eighty nine percent and above. It's pretty close to ninety percent at the maximum. But in a minimum, we, we strove for ninety percent. While being conscientious of cost. The next is sworn police. Sworn police looked really good. Actually, um, the range minimum ninety six point four percent of market, we um, weren't recommending. Any change there. Um, with the range maximum, it just fell slightly below that ninety percent mark. Um, and actually there is a typo on the slide because we didn't move police from eighty nine point six to eighty nine percent. We actually got it to ninety one point six percent. Okay, so apologize for that. I did not notice that previously.
On sworn fire, how do you account for additional certification or other? Pay factors it may.
A lot of organizations through supplemental pays, like if you have certain certifications, um, there's the different levels of firefighter, that's one. And I believe we surveyed those through the supplemental pays. And the city was actually in good shape um, there. There's also those specialty areas. Within the, the fire, I can't think of any off the top of my head. Um. Yeah, there's paramedic, there's um, you know, um. Swiftwater rescue happens to come to mind, things like that. There's, um, those are ways to add on to pay. So. In looking at those structures and how we got to where our final recommendations are, the first one I want to talk about is the general structure. When we looked at the general structure, one of the things, one of the concerns we had is false minimums in the pay range. Um, the city is not hiring anyone below fifteen dollars an hour. The current pay range starts at ten dollars an hour. So there are several ranges that people are not getting hired at that minimum, they're getting hired well into it. So those, that impacted grades ten through fourteen. So we recommended um, adjusting, starting grade ten. To have a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour, so you don't have false minimums. Okay. Um, item number two that um, we identified is there were a large number of empty pay grades. So the city had um, a significant number of pay grades. Um, we increased the, the differential between each grade from five percent to six and a half percent. And by doing that, we were able to reduce the number of empty grades from eleven to four and also renew. Reduce the number of grades in the overall pay structure, which makes it a lot, it. More administratively easy um, to manage. The third item was the number of classifications that were lagging the market and I. I touched on this a little bit earlier, I referenced it. There were um, several jobs that we realigned in the pay structure. Well, the pay structure overall looked pretty good. Um, there were jobs, individual jobs that needed to. Move into higher level grades because of what the market data came back with. Uh, so we recommended that as part of the implementation or our recommendations. So now all jobs. That are in the general structure with our recommendations have a market index of at least ninety percent, ninety percent was the lowest threshold. Okay, which puts them in a competitive market position. Um, the next structure we want to talk about is sworn fire. And we found a couple of um, items of concern there. The first was there were some pretty narrow range spreads. Um, particularly in the firefighter rank. When we compare it to the market, what, what is the market range spread, the distance from the range minimum to the maximum? So what we um, are recommending is that two steps be added to the end of the firefighter, just the firefighter classification range. In doing that, um, it increases the distance from the minimum to the maximum. From twenty eight percent to thirty four point five percent, which aligns more closely with the market. And that does not have an immediate today cost impact. Um, the second one um, was that the range minimums and maximums were lagging the market. So what we are recommending is that the entire structure be adjusted by three percent. By doing so, that will um, increase the competitive, the market index from eighty eight percent. To ninety one point three percent. We wanted to hit that above ninety percent market index. And that is what we um, identified with fire. The next is sworn police. Sworn police, um. The one thing that we um, noticed was that the range spreads were narrow for the police officer compared to the market. So we are recommending adding an additional step to the end of that um, overall structure. That will increase the range spread from roughly twenty five percent to twenty eight percent.
And when does the last step in, when do you encounter that last step? Is it? Time served, is it pass a test, or is it? Okay, it's. And so is that? Literally four years? If it's the fourth step or if it's two years per, I just curious what.
Oh, yeah.
For police, that is, would be step eleven, so I think it would be like eleven years of service.
Okay.
And yeah, fire.
It's thirteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, you know, that's always been the challenge for us is uh, we want to reward those that have stayed. Um, with us a, a long time. And so anyway, that's, that's good.
So if those are just based off a year served, what do we, what are? This might be a question more for Megan, but what are we doing to reward? You know, people have been here the same amount of time, but one's a high performer, one's a low performer. Are we rewarding the high performers and not the low?
That doesn't work in.
Yeah, we're civil service. So we cannot do, we cannot do that. You have to equal pay for equal time. Yeah.
That's the only way you can do it. It just. That just affects fire and um, and police. Uh. Regular staff is different. So that, that is different.
It's different. Merit system for all other employees besides police and fire. But we are limited by the civil service law on what we can do for, for them. Uh, we have implemented a situation where annual increases are available.
Yeah.
But it's uh, based on the step system. So this again helps us address uh, retention by adding steps on the end of the s- scale for people who've been here a while.
Okay. Or so for the non-fire and police, it's the way to reward is purely the merit, merit system at the end of the year, so merit raises.
Cities have the option of merit, color, all kinds of different op- options. We, we have tended to limit our adjustments to strictly merit. And that's what you have in the budget now that Mike mentioned, a three percent, up to a maximum three percent merit is what is in the draft budget at this time.
Okay, thank you. I know you're on a specific sworn police fire right now, but this is the general broad. On the backend data analysis, are you factoring in like turnover rates? When you look at. What's like? Yeah, we may be a little bit behind on market, but i- in this department, we don't have. Much turnover in this department. Do you, is that a factor at all?
No, strictly for the purposes of this, we're strictly looking at your, your pay structure. Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Yeah.
Good to know. Okay, I just need to know for.
Yep.
Processing.
And the extent we achieve that ninety percent in the market compared with comparator cities and competitive cities. Think that uh, emphasizes retention also.
Yes.
And keeps that turnover rate very, very low in police and fire.
Yeah.
Does your analysis include uh, comparing benefits? PTO, things like that, whenever you're talking about the pay structure?
So for this, we, that was not part of the scope of this study. I believe in. A previous study that we did for the city, we did look at the whole benefits package as well. The one thing that I'm going to talk about um, in here in a couple. Slides is um, supplemental pays, so additional pays for. Other things, which was kind of mentioned a little bit earlier.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so um, as I had mentioned, the range spreads um, for the police officers. Were narrower than what we saw in the market and where we saw the issue um, was at the range max. So as I'd mentioned, we added the one, one step, which brought um, the market alignment up to ninety one point eight percent. Here we got the, the number right. Um, next thing I want to talk about, which we were kind of talking about, um, was brought up supplemental pays. We actually surveyed forty two supplemental pay items and those are pays in addition to base pay. Of those forty two, um, we received sufficient data for twenty four of them. Because not all organizations have them, we need five data points. Um, so. We identified, the, what I'm going to show you in this, you, you got the full report, I'm not going to talk about where the city is, you know, matching the market, leading the market. Wanted to address where the city is lagging the market and there were several areas um, in which the city was lagging the market. Um, so as you can see, we've um, shown here what. Belton pays for these supplemental pay items and what the market median is for these supplemental pay. I think the biggest one that we saw in the market bilingual pay. I think overwhelmingly is being offered in the market. Um, so that, that was um, a big one. That was the biggest um, dollar item. The rest of them, the city is offering some level of supplemental pay. Um, it, the market is just offering more. Okay. We selected the median because. If you use what's the average organizations that have really high or really low can really skew that number. So we wanted to target, just like we did with the pay system, those figures right in the middle of the market. Okay.
Or, these are annual?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are annual. So we are recommending that the city increase these supplemental pays for these items. To match the median of the market. And I know that the first question you're gonna have is that sounds great and good, but how much is that gonna cost the city? So we're gonna talk about that and it's the first thing on our implementation costing side. Um, in order to, by increasing the supplemental pays to match the market median. It's gonna impact twenty employees and I think that was primarily just bilingual pay. Um, where the biggest hit for that was. The cost on an annual basis for that is twenty thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. The next item is the general structure. Um. What we, in, in costing this out, we started grade ten, which is the first grade in the pay structure. At fifteen dollars an hour, which is actually what the city is paying right now, the lowest rate of pay. Um, we increased the midpoint to midpoint different, you know, from grade, each grade to each grade. From five percent to six and a half percent. And we relocated jobs in the structure to align with market. So we at least had a market index of ninety percent. Um. Any employees who were below the minimum of our proposed um, pay range were brought to the minimum. And then we also applied some compression adjustments for classifications where there were multiple incumbents. So for example, a maintenance worker, if there are six maintenance workers. Um, it would create an employee relation, in, employee relations issue. If I'm a five-year employee now making the same thing as an employee who's only been here. For a year or six months. So we made some adjustments to that. There were very few of those impacted. The cost for this is fifty six thousand on the base pay seven hundred, which is point, zero point eight percent of payroll. Sworn fire, um.
Before, before you leave general, um, is there a, if there's part-time, let's say, we. Hire high school students or college students part-time, is that not part of this grade or they're at the lowest grade or?
We don't have any, our um, event staff employees is fourteen dollars an hour is what we pay for seasonal event staff. Um, and that would be more of your college, high school.
And so that's not in this, that's just another.
In this, that's gonna be its own level.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm, uh, I assume that would be the case, but I wasn't sure.
No benefits, just, just straight salary.
Okay. Yep.
When we looked at sworn fire, we did increase the structure by three percent because it was um. Below that ninety percent. And we added two steps to the end of the firefighter salary range. There was no immediate cost impact to that change. Um, and employees remained in their current step. We didn't move employees. If you're in step two, you're in step two. So it was about a three percent, is three percent overall in a cost impact. Which is sixty six thousand eight hundred and forty six thousand dollars. That was the, the big one. When it came to police, there was no, no changes to the structure other than adding an additional step. To the police officer range and there was no cost impact to that at all. Employees stayed in their current step, so there's no immediate cost impact. To that um, as well. For a total um, estimated cost of a hundred and forty three thousand six hundred and sixty two dollars, which is reflective of one percent. Of your base payroll expenditures. Doesn't include the legally required, doesn't include overtime, it's just base pay.
And it would, I know David had made a really good point about how with the bilingual pay, we could say. This is just for Spanish because that's really the only thing that really benefits us around here. We wouldn't pay for. You know, Latin or anything.
It's Greek.
Great, I mean, we can, there's nothing against us, just saying.
Right.
Okay.
And yeah, that would be, you know.
Right.
Okay.
Is sign language included in bilingual?
Currently are, what we had, um, what we had put the market out for was just all bilingual, so it would cover everything. So you guys can tell us what you want us to pay for and then we can add those levels, maybe have the same amount, but have. One line Spanish, one line sign language, you know, um, so it's really what you guys want us to.
I think it's important that we make sure that these are customer facing positions, not any position.
Correct.
You know, because then would, if, if someone doesn't have a customer interface and they have that skill and they go take the test, they get paid more to do the same job. But they don't interface with customers, which is the intent of the, of the supplemental pay.
Absolutely, but there's so many of our positions that they're out in the field and so even in the field, they're gonna communicate with citizens. And so like Spanish is gonna benefit us regardless. Plus, we'll have a list from that point of people that are both written and verbal. Um, proficient, and so when we need to update different documents or things, we can pull from that.
Saying that we, there will be no. If anyone passes this test, they'll get the supplemental pay.
That's what we have.
I don't, I don't think. I don't think that that's, I don't think that's, I think that's too broad. That's just me. And if you're wanting input, I think that's, that's broad. I, I think for frontline employees, and I'll just use the two probably easiest. Uh, police officers, um, and those that answer the phone or talk to people one-on-one, right? Um, like on the, at the, at the front, that, that frontline. Uh, you know, I don't want to start, but like, you know, the, an IT guy who's working with Chris to help install routers.
And we can, so one thing that we're doing after implementing this compensation study, what, taking the, the items from it. We've got, we're updating our job descriptions. And so on the job description updates, we've got the list of certifications that are approved for those positions. And so we can make sure that it's just in line with customer service positions.
And another comment is in schools, there's usually a, a bilingual teacher, part of their requirements. But it's not every teacher. And so you can have an over abundance of bilingual, but they won't, they don't fill all, even if you're bilingual, you don't get that slot because there's a slot for bilingual. And so I think we, we do need to add some. This is just.
No, you're, you're right.
Like kind of like a, we have a five hundred foot limit on Airbnbs, right? You're kind of, each department, is there a limit to? All five that sit on office?
We do is we flag positions and say that we have, you know, that we'll accommodate for X number. I don't know, but there, instead no management is just, everybody gets the same, right? A micromanagement is I'm going to go to every position. There's somewhere between micromanagement and no management.
Keep in mind, this is writing and reading.
Yep.
Which is a significant.
Yep.
This is an estimate, what did we say?
Twenty.
Twenty and maximum of twenty is what that funding amount would accommodate basically. So limited in terms of applicability.
Yeah.
But the intent is for customer service and.
Yeah, customer facing and.
Our experience here with the. You know, building official. Who we, we knew obviously could speak, uh, speak Spanish and, and.
Do we have his question results?
It had to be applied.
Yeah.
I'm curious to know how our job descriptions, uh, looked and compared. I think, uh, a couple of years ago, we spent some effort um, in updating those and making sure that people were in the right job and the right classification and that job descriptions were appropriate and, and good. Did that match up and did we reclassify many people because their job was so different or?
That, that, there was not a classification study component to this one. We did do that three years ago, the three, three years ago. Um, typically what we find is we were, you know, over three years. There may be minor tweaks like Megan indicated they're going to be updating, but typically we don't see big swings in job changes. Universally. Yeah, so, but that wasn't part of this study. Okay. Maintenance recommendations, um, as we recommended three years ago, making annual adjustments to the structure based on how the market is moving helps to keep the city aligned with the market and keep costs down when you go to do studies like this. There can always be anomalies like what we saw in fire. Um, typically when we see those big anomalies, we might seem in fire or police. Um, but as you could tell from the general population, the cost was nominal. Um, three years after the last study was done, which kudos to the city for, um, maintaining those adjustments to keep the structure up to date. Um, also annual increases in employee pay is always important, providing, you know, fiscal resources to do so. And again, continuing to conduct, um, a salary survey every three years to make sure that you're keeping pace with the market, what you've been doing in, in the interim is keeping your pay structure competitive. And that is, um, the conclusion to the overview of the study. Are there any other questions?
The last time we looked at the total package, benefits package, PTO, whatever, that was three years ago.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay. I'd be interested to see that if you, Megan, if you could send that over, that report.
Yeah, you're talking about the previous report? Yep.
Call too, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to answer for Megan. Um, with our complete redo of our personnel policy, um, Megan incorporated much of that, uh, testing that was done a few years ago, uh, into the new personnel policy. So, you know, vacation time, you know, that sort of stuff. If we were in line or we used the past study to incorporate into our new personnel policy, uh, when we did that.
Yeah.
But I think we're fairly current on, on stuff like that.
The one thing when doing, um, a, a total compensation study such as this, the cost is almost double what a compensation study is. So we recommend maybe a, a full-blown total compensation study like every ten years. We don't tend to see a lot of fluctuation on the benefits side.
Sure.
Um, in the public sector, so.
Yeah. Think, I think about the, the fire department, for example, I, I think that the shift that we run is perhaps more attractive than, um, like a twenty-four, forty-eight or something that, that other departments may, may run. And so, yeah, I mean, I know people who've, who've taken new jobs with salary decreases because they get a flexible schedule or more PTO or something like that. And so it's, it's hard to look at this in a vacuum because it's, it's just not, you know. Only other question I had is, do we, uh, do we have like a reciprocal participation in these comp studies? Whenever other cities are calling us saying, hey, we're doing our comp study, we, okay, I think that's great.
Alright, I think Craig Pearson had, uh, uh, one online.
A question, question for Megan and, and Sam, as we do our training with our employees, do they get an appreciation for what we're going through and trying to be fair and to keep it fair and competitive? I mean, do they understand the level of, of effort that's going, going into this?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, we have, we have conversations about our certification pays and what it means. And the city puts forth a, and a huge amount of money into training, travel and training into our budgets. And so their department heads are responsible for that. And Mike will always ask the question every year at budget time, when we start looking at it. Why haven't you spent this money if you haven't at this point in time? And he's asking that question usually in March, April of every year, because it is so important to keep our employees up to date on their certifications and their trainings for their jobs. But then part of the certification, you can see we pay forty-two positions in certification pay. Um, there was only twenty-four that were able to be measured because we pay additional certifications that some cities don't pay as well, because they're important to us. And so we are leading the market in those areas because we know those are important jobs.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Yeah.
Uh, Megan, I had one more question for you, uh, just kind of put on the record. I feel like, you know, anytime we're looking at increasing salaries, the question is, are we already getting the quality of people that we want? So like if we're going from zero to nine hundred dollars for bilingual, but we have no problem getting people that are bilingual. You know, then that doesn't really need to take place. So how, how do you feel like we're recruiting the people that, that we need?
So it's different for whatever metric you're looking for. When you're talking about entry level positions, depending on some of the jobs, our maintenance techs, our, our early, um, entry level jobs. Sometimes it's hard to, to get staff because our base pay, like she said, we're paying fifteen dollars an hour right now. Well, they can go down the road somewhere else and make twenty dollars an hour working for a famous, um, truck stock. You know, I mean, so that's kind of our competing, there you go. So that's kind of our compete, competitors in that way. And so sometimes it's very hard to get staff with this study. That increases some of those, it moves some of those positions to sixteen dollars an hour, which will help us be able to at least attract some positions. It's still hard in this market to have a living off of sixteen dollars an hour. That is a tough place to be. And so that's always going to be a hard, um, a hard position to fill. Recently, we had two, two interviews last week. One of them came back with positive drug tests. The other found another job. And so we had two people that were on the hook. Alright, we're in background and now they're both gone and we're back to square one. You know, and we've been working on that for two, three weeks. So that's the kind of struggles that we have with the entry level positions. So it just kind of depends. Some of our upper.
Keeping the certification pay at market is really important for competitiveness, uh, for attracting folks. That might be the decision between somebody accepting the job or not accepting the job. So we're in pretty good shape on most of them. We were recommending adjusting them, some that were lagging, but adding particularly, uh, bilingual pay is something that I think again would help us lead the market and be competitive where that might be the decision maker for somebody.
Tell me any other question.
Uh, along the same lines as Luke's question, there were, I don't know, about eight or ten positions or eight or ten supplemental pay position recommendations. I don't know what the right way to say it is, bilingual county clerk, one, two, three, et cetera. Um, I would be interested in knowing, how many folks are we already paying for each of those positions? How many folks are receiving the county clerk one supplement, the county clerk two supplement, et cetera? Um, yeah, sorry, court clerk one and two.
And we've. We've got that data and get to you guys as well, because we had to get it to logic compensation group. Because we just sent them a, um, a list of how many employees we have that are currently getting paid those certifications. So we knew that cost impact. So I can send that.
I'd like, I'd like to see that in addition to what the, what the turnover is like for each of those positions. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just as a footnote, we've made huge strides, I think, in the last five, seven years. And a lot of people have forgotten about the, the, was it the TMRS matching retirement contribution that we increased significantly?
That's huge, that's huge, going from five to seven ultimately.
Three-year study that we did, uh, uh, made a big, big difference. And now to be one percent within the target, I think is really, really good and not an unattainable item for us.
And just remember last, the last time we did this three years ago, our implementation impact was one point two million dollars. Our implementation impact this time's hundred and forty-four thousand, but that's huge.
My comment I would even add to any of this is I think that that's tremendous and really appreciate the, uh, way that we do make sure we're taking care of our, our people because our people are our greatest assets. And so I think this is incredibly valuable.
And we ask a lot of our people.
We do.
I mean, we've, Mike just talked about a lean budget and we talked about how our tax rate's gone down year over year and, um, I mean, we're doing, we're doing a lot with little and the lot that we're doing is from the people on the ground.
Yep, Fourth of July, this last week is a perfect example.
The city contributed quite a bit.
Probably a million dollars, maybe more.
Number one sponsor.
Number one sponsor.
Just add one comment, I appreciate all the work, logic and Megan, and to put the study together. Uh, really insightful to see that and appreciate the council's support in doing the updated study. I will emphasize again, as Mike mentioned, that hundred and almost fifty thousand dollars is not in the draft budget that you have before you. Those three recommendations are certainly something management would like to propose strongly and, and endorse to include that in the budget. And so, uh, while we have not done that yet, we'd certainly like the council's support to include that as we go forward and try to finalize the budget.
Bring our surplus down to thirty-four to thirty-three percent.
Alright, so we received the report. Now we need to consider implementation. And so by implementation, the recommendation is to approve this to go into the implementation for the next year's budget.
So we would appreciate it.
And chair would entertain a motion to that effect or a similar or dissimilar motion.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, use this compensation study to bake into the personnel budget for next year for those three general areas that were discussed. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Personally to John.
I think it's, go ahead.
See, this just says a straight bottom line, use the reserves, kind of not even trying to bake it in anywhere. Yeah. Alright, uh, Craig.
I think it's relevant to note as we're looking at all of this and incremental steps that we'll be working on over the next weeks. I think, Mike, I believe you told me when we talked that one cent is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars now, is that right?
Um, yes, sir, um, two-ten to two-fifty.
Okay. But I think that's money well spent. I support this.
Yeah, half cent on tax roll or, um, or, uh, reserves. Or pixie fairy dust from something. Alright, uh, no other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're real skeptical of people with the last name Messer around here.
I'm sure you're related.
Probably, probably don't realize it and we apologize for that. Okay, item ten, receive a presentation on the National Community Survey results. NCS, here we go.
Mayor Lee, council members, it's a pleasure to, uh, address you today. I, I'm here to introduce Tobin McCarron. He's the, the data science vice president at Polco. That's the company that conducted the survey. Um, after he presents to you, Sam's going to have some brief remarks. But I have thirty seconds of comments before he talks to you. Um, there was a, a poll online within the last two weeks that said, um, the results for which was, did you know that seventy-five percent of KISD parents are not confident or unsure if their child will be safe at school in the fall? Um, pretty scary, uh, survey there. And also not scientifically valid. I took that survey myself, being a resident of, not of clean and with no student there. So that tells you that's a, not a reliable survey. We don't have a lot of confidence in that survey that, that was online. This, this survey that is before you is a scientific survey. Um, John has, has said data is king. We need to start making database decisions. It's what tonight's about and, and, um, Tobin's going to talk more about that.
You're real short.
Hey, we have a test you can take outside.
You're a contract rate, sir.
That starts next budget year.
Yeah, I'll do it. And I do want to thank my fan base for coming out here to support me presenting. Thank you. Alright, I'm Tobin McCarron. I was hired onto the Polco as the VP of the data science team. I did that for a while, about three and a half years. But I actually recently became the COO and the CRO. Um, so much of my time has also been spent dealing with budget and money. I completely appreciate y'all going through that process. It's a tough one to go through. Good luck with all of that.
Yeah.
Before I go on, I do want to thank two people specifically, one Matthew Bates, who's in your city government that is.
I think he got deported.
As soon as he heard I was presenting, yes. Um, he was, he was essential to this whole thing, from survey implementation to getting the data, to talking to everybody. I mean, he has been fantastic. Great job to him. Um, kudos to him. I'd also like to thank Jason Nuremeyer, who is my, uh, employee or co-co-worker. He did all the work for this. I just get the glory and the honor of getting to present the NCS results for Belton, Texas. Our whole mission as a company is to get data into the hands of the community leaders to make better data-informed decisions. Seems like it works in tandem with what y'all are doing. We acquired the NRC National Research Center in two thousand nineteen. They had been doing the NCS, which is what I'm going to show to you, your results since nineteen ninety-five. Nineteen ninety-four was the first not called NCS, but was a type of NCS. Because of that, they have, we have time trends going back to nineteen ninety-four. And we have customers that have been in and out with us over those past thirty years, so that we have the largest database in the US that is able to benchmark against other cities like yourself. We do also partner with those groups you saw at the bottom. How people use our surveys and normally how communities use our surveys, if they've done it multiple times, one big thing they want to see is the trends and how they've been doing. So they started out with the base, like what y'all did with this one being the first time, a base year. And then they kind of keep gathering the data every two, every three years to see how they're doing. Uh, they also use this specifically to measure the performance of their community and how they're doing in governance, to inform budget, land use, strategic planning, and then to benchmark against other communities so they can see how they're doing relative to the nation. A little bit about the NCS, it's a five-page question survey. Five pages that are ten to thirteen questions. That each part has like one to fifteen parts. So it takes about ten to fifteen minutes to get through the survey. And the survey, every question is broken down to go into one of these ten facets. These facets are, after extensive research, have been used over the past twenty-five years to give a holistic view of how the community is doing and how the residents feel like they are doing in the community and how they feel like the community is doing. So everything kind of focuses into these ten different facets. Your NCS, so it was the first time conducting it. We first mail out a postcard. That postcard just says, hey, go to this URL link if you want to take it. Then we mail out and we also say we're going to be following up with another email. It's also going to have a paper survey. We then mail out a second letter that is a cover letter with the survey with the posters paid envelope, again saying, hey, you can go take the survey on this URL, but also offering them the chance to fill it out by paper, in which they can place it back in the post or the, into the envelope and send it back. How we actually sample is very essential to getting the scientific statistical validity that we get. And so what you have to do in order to get scientific statistical validity, you have to randomly sample a population. Then you can only claim that that population is what you are representing. You can't claim that you are representing a specific demographic in that population only. You can show the representation of how many people from that demographic answered. But to actually get the community and say, we can represent what Belton has done, you've got to randomly sample Belton. So what we do is we purchase from the USPS, say, all of the addresses for all of the zip codes that would work, that service Belton. We then use the GIS files that your city provided to map around what Belton is. And we knock out any of the households that are in those zip codes that are on like the boundaries that wouldn't be, that are not part of Belton. And that gives us our population that we can sample between all households within Belton. And then we randomly sample within that. And so we sent out 3,000 different surveys. First with the postcard, then with the second mailer. And you can see that we got 248 total responses received for about a 10% overall response rate. We'd love to get better response rates. Response rates have been trending down over the past five years, really, especially since COVID. Um, so a 10% response rate is about average of what we're seeing right now. Statistical validity, you can see here that we're saying, hey, so we got a 95% confidence interval with a 6.2% margin of error. The reason we can say that is because we randomly sampled within the city of Belton. In order to get a 5% margin of error, you need about 375 responses to get a 10% margin of error, you really only need about responses. If you want to really peak it up to like a 1%, you would need about 10,000 responses. It does depend on the community size, but once your number gets big enough, it's pretty much a wash if you're sampling Belton or if you're sampling Austin.
Not, not to go down a tangent, but we've got a community, I know you said zip codes that may represent, Belton has one zip code and we share that zip code with Morgan's Point Resort. So is there a delineation between the two? Okay.
Yes, we had the opportunity to look at the map and to verify that three creeks was you know, was not in city limits issues and also seven six one three that were not city Belton residents. So we had a chance to verify that.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. And then we also do wait the results. So example, I think
Result that goes real high. If you don't, it goes dead.
That's right. That's right. The more favorable, the more weight we give you. Yes. No, like so a good example of like what weighting means, let's say that you had 200 men, 200 women, and we sampled every one of them. And you had a hundred men respond and 50 women respond. Well, then we would double the weight of the women's responses. You can only wait as long as you get a certain number of responses, but as long as you get that certain number, then you can say that that accurately represents the other people in that demographic group. I mentioned that we've been doing this for a while, so we do have more than 450 communities, communities that have done this in the past five years of which y'all get compared to. Forty of those, a little over 40 of those are actually within Texas. So Texas is a pretty big hotspot for where we get to survey. So I'm going to go into an overview of the survey results and I'm going to start really big on those 10 facets. And then I'm going to get kind of more granular so that you can see some specific questions that were asked and how your residents are responding. One question we asked to all the residents is of those 10 facets, what do you think of the quality in Belton? And they can answer excellent, good, fair, poor. And this is showing you on here that 74% of your residents rated the natural environment as excellent or good. So you can see on, when it comes to quality, your residents are very favorable of pretty much everything. Mobility and education, arts and culture only getting a 40% rating. So that does mean that the other 60 or the other 52% were rated it as fair or poor. So here's your quality ratings. Every one of them is similar to the national benchmark. In order to be similar, that's just within 10 percentage points. So the national benchmark, your Parks and Rec is 69%. That's within 10 percentage points of what the national average is. We asked that same type of question, but now instead of quality, we say, well, hey, how important is this to you? So what is the importance of these 10 different facets? And they can rate it as essential, very important, somewhat important or not important. And you can see here that pretty much everything is important, which is typical. We see utilities for y'all. That is an 87% importance, meaning percent essential or very important rated at that. That's not normal. Normally we see safety and economy on the top. Shouldn't surprise anyone that those are like really important. But utilities here is really important to your residents, especially relative to others, but it's still within the national benchmark.
If you watch the weather lately, you can see why utilities slash water is very important to this region.
Uh, it just happened today. I mean, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's something always on our mind.
Yes, clearly. Okay, thanks. So this next one is going to put both of those on a graph that we like to use to say, hey, where is it the city could focus some effort and energy on? So where could we allocate resources to? Here you have importance on that bottom one and the blue and the qualities on the top one in the green. And so where I have a big spread between importance being very high and quality being very low is one area we'd recommend you should focus on. So here I can see mobility has a quality of 40%, but an importance of 76%. So that's 36 percentage points difference between those two. Might be an area you want to focus on, but this is a zero sum game. We've got to actually make sure and see where our resources are coming from. And so this also helps us to see where are, where could we actually maybe pull resources from? And I can see here, there's a low spread on natural environment and a low spread on safety. And so not that you want to decrease safety, but maybe a few resources could be pulled from that because your importance is almost matched up perfectly with your quality. Same idea then with natural environment. Just one way that we suggest looking at this. So those are the very general. I'm going to get into more specifics. So I said, there's about 10 to 13 questions, anywhere between 10 to 15 items each. For your survey, there were 116 actual items asked and your residents rated them and y'all did amazing. I've been at not a bunch of these, but dozens of different presentations like this, and rarely do I see 5% receiving lower ratings, right? 116 questions, 10% is going to be around 11. So you had five receiving, receiving lower ratings. That means 5% of the questions that you, that's great. Um, one received a higher rating and then 110 receiving similar ratings. So some people might be disappointed in this, but the communities that come to us to get uh, surveyed are typically high performing communities. The ones that are just surviving don't even have the time to get out and say, hey, how do our residents feel? They want to, they probably, they should, but they've just got to survive. And so realize when you're being compared and 110 are similar to the nation, you are comparing yourselves to other communities who will come to us to do this and other communities who have gone to other, uh, competitors and have vocalized that they want to do it. And if they are doing that, then they must, they are typically always higher performing. And we can actually test that and we do test that to make sure what I'm saying is true. But I, I can get their quality ratings without a resident survey. I need the resident survey to get what we're giving you today, but if I just want to see violent crimes per 100,000 people, I can get that for any city. So we can look at that quality stuff and see, yes, the communities that are actually getting surveyed are typically higher quality communities. And so I'm going to go into six different key findings that we pulled out. There are, there is a lot more information in the PDF that we provided and in our tableau report that's online. And if you use those, you could actually break down into the demographics and see how are renters versus homeowners feeling? How are the different races feeling? How men versus women, right? We can get in more detail, but I'm going to stay higher here for this presentation. So first, most residents experience a high quality of life in Belton. So I'm going to start out with the, with the findings and then I'm going to show you data every time. And so here, the data about eight and 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to Belton as a place to live, Belton as a place to raise children. Overall quality of life in Belton and these two over here on the right. And actually that first one, Belton as a place to live, you had 85% that rated it as a, as excellent or good. And would recommend living in Belton to someone who asked, you had 86% that rated that as excellent or good. These are great marks. These are similar to national benchmarks, but these are on the high side of that similar. The next one is residents report overall satisfaction with governance in Belton as satisfactory and happy with what's going on. Excellent or good for treating residents with respect and being honest. And this is something, if you, if you had done this for the past few years, two years ago, four years ago, every community that's been with us has seen a decline since COVID. You are actually above, slightly above what I'm seeing normally for national averages, but still within that 10 percentage point difference. You should be proud of this. I realize that when I see only 52% rated excellent or good for informing residents about issues facing the community. I'm sure your communications director and others are thinking, no, we do a lot, we do a lot of that. They should be informed very well. The faith in the federal government has sharply declined really over the past four years, unfortunately since COVID. And we're seeing that also trickle into local government perspective. So these rankings are similar to the, to the national averages are good. Obviously we'd rather them all be significantly higher, but they are doing good relative to the nation. The third key finding is Belton earns high marks for community safety. You really do shine here. I mean, everyone feels not everyone, but most everyone feels safe here. Rating is excellent or good. They feel safe during the day in downtown commercial area. They feel safe from violent crime, property crime. These are all really good stats that you're seeing and all similar to what the national benchmark is. To kind of go specific into fire and police and crime prevention and ambulatory MS services, this is, you can see here is how many residents rated these as excellent or good. Number four, so here's what we do see. We'll start seeing like two areas that we think
So help me with my numbers because a lot of times I'll see a 76 as a C. But this is 76 said it's excellent or good. So that's of the top category. So these are like net promoters, like
Exactly. Yeah. If you were an NPS score, that would be, yeah, it would be very high.
I just wanted to make sure I was
Yeah. So excellent, good, fair, poor.
Okay.
And so that does mean 24% rated as fair or poor. And in the tableau present, in the tableau report and in the PDF, you would see how many actually said poor. It just becomes a lot of data if we show you all that in this presentation. All right. So the fourth key finding, economic health ratings aligned with the national benchmark, but reveals some areas of potential focus. And so you can see here, we're at basically three to five and 10 are rating the economy as excellent or good. Cost of living in Belton, available quality, health, mental health care, shopping opportunities. The one that is lower than the national average is employment opportunities. And here you had one out of every four say they were excellent or good. Fifth key finding is residents identify mobility as a potential area of focus. You'll remember, you might remember that when we looked back on quality, that was at like 40% rated as excellent or goods, you would expect that this is going to have a few things that are not looking that great. Um, we see easy travel by car and public parking looks okay. Um, six and 10 saying excellent or good, but then it just starts decreasing. Traveling by bicycle, traveling by public transportation and traffic flow on Main Street, all getting pretty low marks. The one that's below national standards is the traffic flow on the main street.
Question you ask.
Sorry?
Is that a typical question you ask or is that specific to us?
Uh, no, it's typical. I guess how your residents define a main street might be different. Is that why you're asking that one? We did ask some customs for y'all. Yeah, you have some customs.
I, I think to Daniel's point, if you could have asked the one question that was going to go score the lowest in the whole city, traffic on Main Street is literally that question.
Matthew and Sam, let us know that. They didn't want to strike that out.
It, it's like, it's like if you had like 45 riots and police like shoot 18 people the prior, prior year. Um, how, how's the police response to public? It, it, it would have had a similar result. It was just like, anyway, it's a
So also
It's interstate 35. It's, uh, our problem is proximity to a highway that shuts down.
Feels relevant to note that both of those roads are text not roads.
They are. Yeah. Yeah.
My two and a half drive here, I had no traffic getting here. So I was pretty pleasantly surprised. Uh, this last slide on mobility services just shows some more specific areas. So street cleaning, traffic enforcement. Here's all the ratings by your residents as excellent or good. All accord, all standard with the national averages. And so the last one that I'm going to talk about for your key findings is the quality of Belton's natural environment is recognized and well regarded. And why do we say that? Well, you're getting pretty high marks for air quality. You actually were above, this is the one that you were above the national average with your water resources. Um, with two lakes and your people obviously appreciate that and appreciate the water cleanliness here. The cleanliness of Belton gets really good, high, high marks. Everything here is doing well. That one being above. So you'll actually ask three custom questions and you asked one or three, three open ended questions and one custom. I'm going to show you the custom. Uh, in case you're interested in what the open ended were, they were most important issue Belton should focus on public service. You feel Belton could improve and one thing you wish Belton had that you go out of town for. Um, all three of those obviously provide you good information to think, hey, how is it that I can spur the economy along and what is it that people are looking for here? This one was, how would you rate the following annual events in Belton? And so there's eight different options here. The next slide is just going to show you the top four and how people rated them. The more brown and purple on that left side you're seeing, the better. And so that's excellent. And I guess that's gold, excellent and gold, purple looks good. And when you combine those, you can see that you're getting really high marks for these four. These were the highest four with the fourth of July parade really coming in strong as the front runner. How did it go this year? I wasn't here.
It rained on our parade.
But enough to cool it off.
Sorry to hear that. Well, they did like it in past years.
No, they did. They liked it this year too. It just got a little wet.
Adds a different dynamic. Yeah. All right. Summary of key findings are here. It's the six things we went over. I'm happy to answer any questions you got.
We're interested in starting to collect data.
We love data. Yeah.
We were talking to cell phone captured data. I'm not real familiar with what's available or what's out there. What do you think is important for a city to try to capture, uh, and use, uh, or is that too broad?
Oh, I don't think it's too broad. I mean, all the, I mean, those facets that I said, I would think you'd want to capture data on that. So there's a lot of things we could go, but let's park usage, right? I can capture that on a cell phone and see who's actually at the parks, how many people are actually using them. That would be one area, but is that the most important area? Safety is the most important to most people. Mobility is really, it wasn't as important to y'all. What was it? Utilities was really important. And so can I use cell phones for utilities?
I think that's because we went up on the water rights, but okay.
Yeah. I mean, so what data is important to capture? How your residents feel about how you're doing, right? Like if I, I can implement a plan, but if I don't then follow up with my residents to see how it is that that plan actually impacted them, then I don't really know if it was successful. If all I do is talk to one or two or three people, I'm not, I'm getting anecdotal information, which is better than nothing, but I'm not really getting the consensus of what the people think. And we also do find like when I follow up, when I do this survey, or if I was to do some survey about how many people were at this one park, it's really good to follow up to your residents. Hey, here's the results. Here's what we saw. Here's what we're doing about it. And here's what we hope it gets fixed. Let them know your thoughts and inputs on it. Um, there's definitely a fear to that because you're now opening it up to public criticism and comment. But we find the more we interact, the more communities interact with their residents, the more trust and empathy that they end up getting from their residents. Um, I saw your budget up here and we have a budget simulation where residents actually can sit in and play with the budget and they can make the changes. And they can see, oh, if I take from this, I got to give to this or like, how is it that I allocate all this money? And the more residents are involved in that process, the more they start to understand, oh man, this is complex. Like I thought this was a silly move that the city did, but now that I see all the trade offs they're facing, I actually understand why they did that. And I don't have a better option like that seemed like the best option. Um, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I've just got a couple of comments whenever, whenever you're done, Tobin. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a couple of comments that I'll make. Uh, this is the first time we've done this. I want to thank Paul and Tobin and certainly Matt for all his work on this item. But we also want to show you, uh, the importance of these benchmarks and the fact that a number of these items are underway that we're working on right now in response to some of the concerns. We obviously the main street and, uh, traffic concerns were, were some of the negatives, uh, cost of living and housing affordability. But then also mobility improvements were important. So just want to show you kind of a timeline real quickly of things that are in the works. You're aware of some of these things. The additional sidewalks, it's shared use path on the loop. Uh, we're planning sidewalks on North Main Street and Penelope. And coming next year, the Sixth Avenue sidewalk, uh, project is scheduled to get underway in 27 as a part of that widening, uh, reconstruction project. And of course with Conell and Central, there'll also be sidewalk projects. Uh, shared use path along Sparta, you'll see a agreement with Textot, uh, in another meeting or two to, uh, do that. Uh, extension of sidewalk from Sparta Elementary around to Chisholm Trail Park. That'll be in 28. And then of course the I-35, I-14 project will have some, uh, shared use paths as well. Main Street's a biggie, of course, that's certainly traffic concerns that we presented to you in the past. We have dialogue scheduled in the next couple of weeks with Textod and with UMHB on some of the initial recommendations on that. And Textod has come up with their specific schematic of design for how that might work. And so we'll be talking with them, uh, shortly about that. And then of course the HOP has added the micro transit. And so that addresses some of the public transit as, as people become more aware of that and use that more effectively. Some of the other issues in terms of community development, employment opportunities were certainly mentioned. And of course you know what's going on with, with Amazon and Weizenbaker just had their, uh, uh, dedication. Housing, we've got a number of subdivisions underway. Um, of course, in everyone's mind, you have an idea of what affordable housing might be, but we've just identified a number of subdivisions that are underway right now, hidden trails, sky view. Um, and of course, just in terms of development activity, River Farms and Tyler Ridge voluntary annexation that's coming in. So there are, uh, solutions in the works, um, trying So there are, uh, solutions in the works, um, trying to address some of these things in a, in a comprehensive way. And then of course, communication was another item that was identified and we've, um, added a new PR coordinator that is working with PD and other departments on citywide communication. And we're working to share more information with, with the public about council decisions and, uh, certainly imagine Belton got a lot of press recently. Uh, we're working with staff to train, uh, our folks on, you know, staying on, on brand and building unity. And then you'll be seeing more videos coming out, uh, as well coming forward. So this was an important effort. This was the first time we ever did a national survey. This emerged from council commentary as something that was important. You know, we do planning, strategic planning every year, but, but are we really reflecting what the community wants? And so it was important for us to do this first time around. And I think we, we take the information with some, uh, with some guidance and, and certainly input from the council to allow us to proceed to implement that. So we appreciate the council's opportunity, giving us the opportunity to do the survey. And certainly there are other tools that, uh, the firm has available that, uh, we will be exploring in the future. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'll just say top level, it's, it's great to see that the majority of the questions that ask, we're at, at or above the national average. Um, in at least in, I'll just say in customer engagement. I mean, we, uh, Belton is engaging well. And if our biggest, uh, hurdle is Main Street, uh, there's a lot worse problems. It's like, I didn't even know we had a problem on Main Street because they're never here, right? So at least people, uh, do come through town and do use our roads and do come downtown. So it's a good thing. Right? All right. That's, uh, no action on item. Move to item eleven. We receive a presentation and consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with MHS planning and design for the development of city of Belton Parks and Recreation, Recreation Master or Strategic Master Plan for twenty twenty six to twenty thirty six.
And I promise to be brief, so I won't keep you here too long. But as, as you're aware, our Parks and Master Plan, which was implemented in twenty twenty sixteen is fast coming to an end and it's time to move on to our next one. The slide shows, uh, the priorities that were from twenty sixteen and then in twenty twenty, uh, one, when we did the five year update, these are the, the highest priorities. As you can see, there's not a lot of difference between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty one. A couple of things, we're expanding park lands and services, which we managed to do with Stamp Out Park and the Heritage Park Expansion. So those are some highlights from the previous plan. It's important to note, uh, the plan, the ten year master plan that, that it gives us, not only gives us direction and guidance and helps in budgeting, but it is also a requirement for the Texas Partial Wildlife Grants. They'll never get the seven hundred fifty thousand if we didn't have the Parks Master Plan. So that's important to have that. And we recently just got the Heritage Park Expansion was a seven hundred fifty thousand and the Stamp Out Park was another seven hundred fifty thousand. So, um, in, uh, May of, of twenty twenty five, we sent out a, a, a quest for RFQs. Uh, we had twenty five people, uh, inquire about them, uh, got this middle. We had nine of those actually submit RFQs back to us. Uh, so we put together a five member, uh, review committee, made up of Matt, myself, uh, Ms. Amanda. Thank you very much, ma'am, from our assistant finance director and, uh, our, um, uh, park superintendents, uh, Matt or Joe and Adam. So these are the five criteria that we followed, which was the, uh, their experience with parks access plans for specifically cities of our size, similar to our size. Now the qualifications are expertise in, uh, that they focused on parks and rec master plans, uh, which is parched trails and open spaces. Uh, and the other things was the completeness of the submission and their methodology and the process that it go through and the schedule and availability. The last one, uh, the importance of that was can they get on our plan right away in order to get us a plan back to us early next year? So we have it in time to go to council. And, uh, uh, so that we can then budget and plan for that while we're doing the budgeting process, which is early in, in the year. Uh, and also it gives us the chance to, uh, apply for Texas Partial Wildlife Grants in that same year. So that's good. So through this process, two firms stood out. They rose to the top quite quickly. There's a big difference between the top two and then three, four and five, there was a big gap. So we only decided to interview just those top two. And those top two firms, when we conducted interviews, um, it was funny because we could really could have literally flipped the coin of either one of those two companies, uh, which was bird at land and place and MS, uh, MHS planning and design. It wasn't until we did the references and started my rest that MHS actually started rising above the other, uh, based on their, the reviews we got back. Uh, everyone I spoke to, uh, that has used them before, said they would definitely use them again. Didn't get quite the same response out of the other, other company that we were looking into. Matter of fact, one of those references, I say, hey, hey, we're not going to use them again, but have you tried MHS? They're doing really good work right now. So, uh, so we, we felt like we're on the right track with that. So it wasn't too after that, we got that. So this is MHS, um, in this, uh, plan. Up here in the, in the top, these two right here are, um, some of their pop up events that they put on out in the park, the one on the right there, uh, that's actually at a pizza place. So they set up a table in a pizza place and they started randomly asking questions throughout the process. The one on the left is a, uh, uh, children's event on the park. And this was pretty neat where they went and actually asked the kids, they gave them stickers. Here's, here's three stickers and there's like ten things on the board. Here's go place a sticker where, um, amenities that you really like about our parks or what you like to see in our park. And so they even got the kids involved. Uh, this is a Texas based firm, uh, with well over thirty years of experience. Uh, and, uh, they have well over fifty million dollars worth of grant funding that they've received, uh, throughout their process. As you can see last year or this current cycle, uh, every grant that they submitted, they've got a hundred percent approval on. So they've got a huge success rate in that. Okay. Uh, so, uh, once, once we decided on MHS, we, we started to negotiate with them on their, um, what's going to be included in their plan, the data collection, the community engagement, stakeholder meetings and so forth and so on. And we're able to, uh, negotiate that they could actually be done. It's an eight to ten month process. We negotiated, could, could you actually get it done in eight months? We should get us in the timeframe that we want it to be done. And they said, yes, they could absolutely do that. Uh, so we, uh, we negotiated the price down, uh, from what they initially started with, uh, seventy five thousand dollars seems like a lot of money for a master plan. To me it does. When we were doing, uh, started to ask around, uh, at our conference and so forth, we were getting in from a hundred fifty to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for these plans, which we thought was absolutely ridiculous. So being able to get a full master plan for around seventy five thousand dollars, I thought was a pretty good deal. And the reversible expenses, not taking five thousand, that is, uh, travel expenses, uh, over and above what they have actually negotiated and planned. So there's five trips coming here. If we start going over that, they'll start charging us mileage for that, but they'll not go over five thousand dollars, uh, on that. Did send it to the Parks Board, uh, to, to get some recommendations from them. Uh, they were all in favor of it, uh, those I spoke to. They did say a couple of things, the comments they made, that they say that the parks plan, this particular one is much more detailed than the last one we went through. So and I came from Diane, who's been here for twenty years and she's seen a number of these. So we got that, uh, and they liked the fact that they were, uh, the company were, uh, MHS is very parks and rec focused. Mostly what they do is all parks and rec master plans. So they liked that. Uh, and they did suggest that we look closely at the feasibility study options as the plan progresses. That was something we might want to look into as we go on. Uh, so, uh, the feasibility study is something that we, uh, treat that we did, we talked about looking into. So we did ask them, what is the cost of that? And you can see for the feasibility is for indoor rec center is about seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, it is the staff recommendation that we wait until we're further into the process, until we have a draft plan, see whether or not that's still high on the priority list and actually have more specifics on what is it exactly you want in an indoor rec center and actually do the study on that. Uh, so, uh, that is actually stat. So today we're bringing for you the recommendation to operate city manager to enter into an agreement with MHS planning and design for the city of Belton's Park and Recreation Strategic Master Plan for twenty twenty six to twenty thirty six. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any comments or judgments?
So is, uh, is this something done in tandem with like the Parks Committee? Do they have a say? Is this a process involving them or is this totally outside?
Parks Committee, you talking about the Parks Board?
Yeah.
Sorry. The Parks Board will, will be intimately involved in this throughout the entire process. Uh, so once we start this process, they will actually have all the reviews and through the process and before it even comes to the council. Uh, and they're actually one of the stakeholders that we interviewing the city council, Parks Board and our, uh, athletic associations and on the community. So they're, everybody's going to be involved in this. Other questions?
Normally the sheets save their budget or not? This is, I'm assuming this is a budgeted expense for this year.
It is not an extra budget. We're actually using savings from the current budget we're in to actually pay for this. So we're not going to impact next year's bus at all.
But so, okay, follow up question then. Going through this process on the Parks Board in twenty sixteen, the indoor recreation center always comes up super high on the list. Is it worth just doing the feasibility study now?
I would agree with that. So.
It always comes back as a community high priority, not necessarily a council high priority.
I think, I'll just share my, my opinion. Um, I think it's really important for us to do a study without leading them where we want to lead them to see what the community says. And if it does, to James's point, if it does come up as a high priority, then we are ready to then say, okay, let's do a deep dive in that issue. Because if I thought we should have whatever water polo, and let's just go ahead and put water polo in there because it was there in twenty sixteen. And if it doesn't come up again, well, then we skew the results. So that's, that's my own personal.
Probably also more of a entire facilities type feasibility.
And it's, and it's more than just facilities. It's, it's usage, it's engagement, it's open spaces, it's including pets. You know, and, and we go through cycles, you know, we, you know, at one point when I was a kid, everybody was playing tennis. And then that went away and now they're all playing pickleball. It's like, it's kind of comes back.
We used to have a old derby slam out there too.
Yeah. So who knows?
Nobody does that anymore.
Yeah.
Swimming pools have come up in the past as well. Kind of ebbs and flows. And so the analysis that we get from the surveys and the conversations with the council and Parks Board and all may help us go in a certain direction and it may emerge. We've got the price for it now. It's set. So it wouldn't be a change order. It would, we know what it would cost to do the analysis if we determine after we get some more data that it's, it's timely to do it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I tend to like the blind survey versus the, uh, uh, lead the survey. Um, cause I, anyway.
That, that's, that's our recommendation and, and Josh from Parks Board, it's also his recommendation that we.
It sounds like.
We can see what comes.
Does come up again. To your point, it has, we're ready to do it.
And it most likely will.
Tobin, I know that you thought you were done, but do you recall from your survey on the open ended questions of what is Belton lacking? Do you, do you recall a, a, a large demand for an indoor recreation center?
I know it was on the list of.
Yeah.
Things. I don't remember how high, uh, it was on there.
Okay. All right. This one, uh, actually requires, um, an authorization to execute the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, saving the feasibility study for later.
All right. A motion of second to accept as presented and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with MHS planning and design for the development of our next, um, master plan for Rick Parks Rec. Right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously. That's number eleven.
Thank you, James.
Right. Item twelve, consider authorizing the BEDC executive director to execute a contract and related documents for the sale of eleven point eight one nine acres located on FM ninety three to Lena Shetay and Asine's. Cynthia.
Great. We're almost done. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, so, uh, tonight we are going to ask for your support in approving a contract for the sale of property on FM ninety three to Lena Shetay. And this will look familiar to you because we brought a contract to you last month for this same area. And so you are familiar with the Rockwell site and the history of the Rockwell property. Um, it is currently, uh, monitored by TCQ, but it has been remediated and monitored over the year by, over the years, uh, by TCQ and EPA. Uh, the city, uh, acquired the property and in twenty sixteen, they conveyed it to BEDC. The goal of BEDC's acquisition was to make this property productive again. And so over the years, as you know, we have marketed the property, we've done environmental, um, studies on it. We've worked with consultants, with EPA, with TCQ, and we've positioned this property so that when we sell it, um, future property owners can, um, benefit from some, um, liability protection of in owning the property. And so, um, we have sold, um, we have sold fourteen acres of the Superfund site in twenty nineteen. Uh, last month, uh, you approved a contract for the sale of property to, um, John Tex Properties. And so the very last parcel, um, that we own is on the thirty six acre tract, um, illustrated here. And so let me just zoom in. Oh, I, I'm reminding you of the sensitive areas of the Superfund site. Um, this map illustrates, um, where the monitoring wells are and, uh, the property has restrictive covenants. And so TCQ has some requirements as to special, um, accommodations that need to take place when you dig in certain areas of the property. But the area highlighted in yellow is the subject property for this contract. Um, eleven point eight one nine acres is what we're looking to sell. This is what is remaining of the Superfund property that the city acquired and later conveyed to the EDC. You can see, uh, the area that looks like a, like a parking lot, that's the MatCon cap where, uh, EPA has buried, um, the contamination on the property. We have provided for this in our cost to the prospective purchaser. And in all discussions, um, the prospective purchaser is aware of the environmental considerations of this property. And they have also met with TCQ and EPA and, um, will do so again during the due diligence period. So this is the plat, um, that the final plat for the property. Um, we have been working with this prospective purchaser and with John Tex for about a year and a half, maybe two years now. And so we've plotted the property in anticipation of the sale. We've also included in this plat, um, the property that will be conveyed to the city of Belton for the realignment of the, um, hike and bike trail, um, that is being done in partnership or planned in partnership with the city of Temple. So about the project, um, the sale of property, um, will facilitate the development of the Rockwell property. And, um, today there's no final plans for the site. Uh, I think the market really will drive how that property is developed. But we know in working with a developer that the intended use will support office, retail and or light industrial users. Again, just depending on what the market will support when they're ready to move dirt. And, uh, in addition to making this property productive, um, it's also a component of the two million dollar EDA grant that the city received. So in writing the grant, part of, uh, the ask for ED to EDA was to help this property become developable with the utilities extended in this area. Um, in your packet, you had a copy, you have a copy of the contract. You see the sales price, um, for the eleven point eight one nine acres is a hundred thousand, four hundred and forty nine dollars and fifty cents. Uh, earnest money is one thousand. There's a fourteen day option period and there is an environmental addendum. Um, a couple of comments that I'd like to note, um, we've made some administrative tweaks to the contract. And so on page one, uh, there's an area where we've actually filled in the acreage, uh, eight, uh, eleven point eight one nine acres since the plat has been completed. There's not a need for, for the survey. And so we've made that adjustment. Also, we've, uh, indicated on the contract that, uh, Clearwater and Bell County WCID, I think number six will be notified of the, um, of the contract as well. And, uh, the final item is, um, we do not have a closing date on the contract, but we're working with Lena Shetay right now to finalize that. Um, so what we're asking is the council's, um, approval of the, of the contract in its substantial, um, in its form substantially. And so the BDC Board of Directors approved this on July first unanimously. And, um, we would like to move forward with the sale of property to Lena Shetay and Asine's. Um, it's eleven point eight one nine acres on FM ninety three. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any comments, questions?
Just to note, that little four acre cap that looked like a parking lot is a restricted zone that cannot be built upon. And so EDC is really excited about the sale of this property and closing the eleven acres and, and getting it on the tax rolls. which the long-term benefit for the citizens. E P A Superfund sites.
Yeah, I'm amazed y'all were able to sell it for anything. Good job.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve, item twelve is presented.
We have a motion and second authorizing Executive Director Cynthia Hernandez to execute the contract for the sale of eleven point eight one nine acres substantially as was presented to the seat. Any other comments, questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass unanimously and we're done before eight. Only had two flash floods while we were sitting here. My phone got blown up during it, like flash flood, flash flood, flash flood.
It was pretty easy to see, it's been working so well. So did you tell Mayor?